Welcome back. Before we begin with 8.2, I just would like to thank all members of council on behalf of Donna Cool for actually going over and attending the Indigenous event today, and it goes to nine o'clock tonight, so she wanted to express her appreciation for those people who went over, so thank you. We will move on to 8.2, Staff Report Regarding Council and Committee Meetings, Annual Statistics, and Process Improvements. There's a report. Do any members of council have any questions or comments? Seeing none, can I have a motion? Oh, wait, I do have a motion here. By Counselor Palashi, seconded by Counselor Sprowieri, that the report and the, oh, yes, that the report and the recommendations be approved. All in favor? That carries. Thank you very much. 8.3 was in consent. 8.4 was brought forward with 6.3, the delegation. 8.5, we have a report from Bob Darling, Economic Development and Culture, Making Our Seniors Matter, Request for Relief from Cost of Rental for Chinkoozie Curling Club. Do any members have any questions or concerns? Counselor Miles?
Yeah, thank you very much. So, I guess what I'm wondering is, because this was one of the events that used to be a staff-hosted event through community services, and this organization volunteered to take it over, if we were doing it, it would be completely city resources that would have to go towards it along with the rental, but because it's now another group, if the city is a partner in it, is there not an opportunity for the city to actually be the holder of the event at the Chink Curling Club?
Through the chair now, I'll speak, Bob's not here, this is Bob Darling's report, but from my perspective, this is something that's run now by the seniors, and as we've been consistent with what we're doing, any grant application, any request for waiving the fees, we're following council's policy, and this falls into that same category. If we're starting to make exceptions, we likely should not.
You could just say no.
Yeah, so staff's recommendation is, as the report says.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Miles. Seeing no other questions, we have the report, it's been moved by Counselor Maderos, seconded by Counselor Willens to receive the report, and the recommendations attached. All in favor? That carries. 8.6 was deferred to the July 5 meeting. 8.7 was brought out of consent by Counselor Maderos.
Thank you, through Acting Mayor. I guess I just had a question, Al. In terms of what we're planning on doing with the Civic Center in terms of the leasing, if you can just refresh my memory, we had talked about either there would be some upgrades or there were some issues in terms of repair, so I just wondered if you can just speak to, I guess, what the intention is there and just clarify for me. Thanks.
Through the chair, I believe the, sort of the recollection was that during budget deliberations, council put a motion on the floor, I guess, or direction to staff that in regards to the Lester B. Pearson Theater at Civic Center, we were to refrain from doing any aesthetic capital improvements to the actual theater until we knew what the future of the Civic Center was going to be, and we're following that, and we're scheduled to come back to council in September with an update on the future of the Civic Center. What this specific report does and it illustrates is, because we're able to consolidate some of our staff, it's freeing up some space at the Civic Center, which for minimal cost is now going to allow us to generate some additional revenue. We're going to lease out the space on a short-term basis to community groups. There is always a demand for community space and lease- leasable space at the Civic Center, so this will actually allow the city to generate some additional revenue as a result of these administrative changes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor Maderos. Counselor Willens?
Yeah, thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for the report, Al, this is good, especially when it pertains to, I guess, the parks operations more and the bylaw enforcement. I've been with the bylaw guys, and it's kind of frustrating, are they here, are they there from the staff perspective, so thank you very much, I think that's going to be a good move, that would free up the building that bylaws in over there now for maybe giving some animal services, a little bit more room, because they're desperately needing it over there as well, so that's great. The parks operation maintenance, that's, makes sense, just makes sense, they're all under that one operational reliance. Good, thanks for the report.
Thank you, Counselor Willens. Counselor Dillon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick question, is there a breakdown of the, like, of each area in which the money's going to be spent? Just, you know, where the 513, 888 is actually going to, so we have, council has a better idea of where the money's being spent?
Through the chair, we do have a detailed budget for each one of the contemplated moves. I don't have it, and it's not in the report, but I can certainly circulate it to council members if you'd like, but that is available. That's how we develop all of our capital budgets, it's specific to each one of those moves, and then combined, when we package the entirety of the moves, it just added up to that total, but we can certainly give you a breakdown if that's what, if that's your desire.
Yeah.
Okay. No further questions. I have a motion by Counselor Maderos, seconded by Counselor Dillon, to receive the report from Al Meneses. All in favor? That carries. Thank you very much. We did consider 8.8 already this morning with the non-delegation of 6.1. 8.9 is in consent. We move on to 8.10, Application to Amend the Zoning Bylaw, Glenn Schnar and Associates Incorporated, Culver, Singh, Gill, 9658 Goreway Drive, Ward 8. Do any members have questions or comments of staff? Oh, seeing none. I have a motion by, moved by Counselor Miles, seconded by Counselor Maderos, that the report be received and that we accept the recommendations attached. All in favor? That carries. Thank you very much. 8.11 is our next item, Staff Report Regarding Application to Amend the Zoning Bylaw, Weston Consulting Group Incorporated, Atlas Healthcare, Brampton Limited, Ward 3. This item was distributed at the start of today's meeting. Do any members have any questions? They do. Counselor Maderos?
Through the Acting Mayor, I just, very quickly, as one of the area councillors, and I just want to say thank you to staff for a fantastic job in working to get, to make this happen, and also thank my colleagues, I know Chair Planning, and everyone rolled up their sleeves to really come together, and thank you, thank you to our CIO. I think it's an important investment for the area, it's an important, really signals to the community our strategy along the hospital, so I just want to say thank you to everybody.
Thank you very much, Counselor Maderos. Would you like to move the report? Do I have a seconder for the report? Counselor Willens, thank you. All in favor? That carries. Thank you very much. We will move on to 8.12, 8.12, Staff Report Regarding the Transit Council of Chairs, Terms of Reference. And we've got everybody here to speak to that, good. Counselor Dillon? Just want a recorded vote on number two. Recorded vote. Okay. Is there any other comments, questions?
I'll receive the report. Is, are you finished, Counselor Dillon?
Yes, Mr.
Okay. Counselor Palashi?
Thank you, just, and I think Counselor Dillon just answered my question, I just wanted to get it out. Are you asking to split one and two, and vote on them separately, and then asking for the recorded vote on number two only? Okay, thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions or comments. Mr. Clerk, we will vote on number one first.
Not a recorded vote?
No recorded vote on number one. All in favor? That carries. And a recorded vote has been requested for item number two. You can see it on there, the Terms of Reference listed in Appendix 2 of the report be approved.
Members of council, recorded vote's been requested on Recommendation 2. All in favor, please stand to be counted. Showing in favor is Counselor Miles, Chair Bowman, Counselor Sprowieri, Counselor Palashi, Counselor Willens, Counselor Moore, Counselor Gibson. All opposed, please stand to be counted. Showing opposed is Counselor Maderos, Counselor Dillon. Mr. Chair, that motion carries seven to two.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. We will now be moving on to item number 10, Lady Reports. In minutes, we have six sets of minutes today. Under council's meeting procedures, the committee or section chair introduces their committee report or minutes and summarizes the matters considered, and they're now being brought forward to council today for ratification. Thank you. Counselor Moore, you chaired the Planning and Development Committee meeting, which met May 29. The committee recommendations were approved at the June 7 council meeting, and you were provided an overview of the meeting at that time. The minutes are here for receipt only, there's no need for an additional summary. Any questions, Counselor, oh, sorry, it's over to you, Counselor Moore.
Counselor Sprowieri?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you, I have just a observation. At the planning meeting that I attended, I went on other municipal business, and I was marked as absent. I don't know whether I should be corrected.
Counselor Sprowieri, are you looking at the minutes for May the 29? It does say other municipal business.
Oh, but on the, let's see, 10-111, on the recorded vote, it showed as absent.
Oh, okay.
Some of the reports on 10-111.
So through you, Mr. Chair, if there is a recorded vote and a member is not present, they're shown as being absent, the reason for their absence is not shown in the recorded vote, it's shown in the record of attendance at the start of the minutes. Okay? That's fine. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further questions on the minutes only for the May 29 meeting. Mr. Chairman, do you want me to move through, because 10.2 are the minutes and the recommendations, I believe, have already been approved, Mr. Chairman, or Mr. Clerk?
Yes, please.
Okay. And I see nobody on the board to speak to that. Do you want to move up 10.6, the meeting from June the 9?
You can do that.
We have three, we have three sets of planning minutes, might as well do them all in one.
Sure.
Okay. Just, this is the meeting that took place two days ago, so just as a reminder to everybody, we had, we added one delegation and three items under correspondence. We also brought back onto the agenda the application for the Volvo dealership at West Drive and Steels, and that was subsequently approved. We had a delegation on a housekeeping report, amendments to the signed bylaw, and we had a delegation on the Municipal Comprehensive Review Report that was on the agenda, that addressed two different applications for conversions. We had a presentation from staff on the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, and we subsequently approved the final report, so today is the final approval of that document, the blueprint for staff in our Recreation Department. We approved an approval of a shared servicing agreement on Sunny Meadow Boulevard. We had a recommendation report, or, sorry, information reports on the Provincial Growth Plan and Green Belt Plan of 2017 and Bill 139, the Building Better Communities and Conserving Watersheds. There were five demolition reports, one on Herald Street, one on Credit View, one on Morris Court, Airport Road, and River Road. There was a zoning bylaw and draft plan of subdivision in Ward 10 for five detached residential lots, and we approved two different applications for facade and building improvement grants, one on George Street and Main Street South. On the Municipal Comprehensive Review Report, there was a decision on one of the addresses at 69 Bramley Road, but there was a non-decision on the 10124 and the 10144 here Ontario Street, and I understand Counselor Palashi would like to refer that back to staff, so I'll recognize him when I'm finished giving the overview today. We did approve the rather outstanding motion that Counselor Palashi had put forward that was specific to the non- the conversion of employment lands to non-employment as it related to Heritage Heights, and we had five items of correspondence all related to the MCR. Counselor Palashi?
Thank you so much, Chair Moore. Just on that item, the non-decision, I would like to refer that back to staff, and with a little bit of direction, and that direction is just to say that I would like the opportunity for the stakeholders, landowners in the area, the applicant consultants, staff from planning, from economic development, urban design, and the area councillors to, to come together and have a look at that whole northwest corner vision that the area councillors do have and would like to see happen one day. I, you know, to be completely honest, I, if no councillor changed their mind from two days ago, I could put that on the floor and vote on it today, and it may pass, but out of respect to other councillors and their concerns, I'm choosing not to do that, and I'm asking for all councillors around the table just to support the referral and with an opportunity for us to get together and really outline what some of our visions are for, for that area. I'm asking that other councillors just, you know, respect the fact that we'd really like, you know, more of an education on and understand some of the, some of the issues that, that staff had come, come out with, and some of the issues that other members of council had also explained. So, so I'm not asking you to support that one-off, I'm asking you to support a referral that, for it to come back, and with, in reality, you know, we don't have the same visions for, for your areas, I just ask you to respect the vision that we have for ours, and hopefully I can get your support on, on the referral.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Palashi. Counselor Dillon, are you speaking on the recommendations or the referral motion?
Not on the referral motion.
Okay.
Sorry, there's a lot of other things. Oh, can I speak now? Oh, okay, sorry. I thought you were just asking me, sorry.
Take your time.
Yeah, we're on the June 19 minutes, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, I wanted to get a recorded vote on 10.6-19 at the bottom, PDC 1632017.
Is it the 69 Bramley Road?
No, this is the-
I'm sorry, what page are you on?
Heritage Heights, net 300 hectares of employment land allocation. 10.6-19.
Okay, this is the motion, the outstanding motion that's been carried over from, for several meetings?
So through, through you, Madam Chair, I believe, Counselor Dillon's referring to on page 10.6-19, PDC 1632017?
Yeah.
Yes, I think that's the motion you are referring to.
This was the motion that was tabled quite some time ago that we finally brought to a vote on Monday evening. Okay. I have no other speakers on the board, so, Mr. Clerk, I, do I hand this back to the Chair to call the vote on the referral motion? Or do I do that, and then pass it all back to, okay. All those in favor of referring the indecision on 10124 and 10144 here Ontario Street? All those in favor? Okay, that's carried. I'll now turn it back to the, okay, so I'll call the vote, the recorded vote on Recommendation 163. Okay.
Can you put that on the screen?
I cannot, I don't have the paper.
Okay. That, Counselor Moore, can you read that, so everybody knows, because we can't put it on the screen.
Okay, so PDC 163-2007 reads, that the employment land converted as recommended in the report MCR, city-initiated official plan amendment, to convert employment lands to non-employment uses dated March 5, 2017, not be added to the existing Heritage Heights net 300 hectares of employment lands allocation, and further, that any city-initiated or other official plan amendments to convert lands designated for employment use to non-employment use in Brampton be accompanied by recommendations detailing potential lands where the resultant deficient in employment land uses can be made up. There was a recorded vote on Monday evening, and a second recorded vote has been requested.
Members of council, all in favor of PDC 1632017, please stand to be counted. Showing in favor is Counselor Miles, Chair Bowman, Counselor Sprowieri, Counselor Palashi, Counselor Willens, Counselor Moore, and Counselor Gibson. All opposed to the motion, please stand to be counted.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Chairman.
Yes.
I, I made a mistake on this vote. Can I, yeah, I'd just like to recall that vote.
So, okay, members of council, all opposed to the motion, please stand to be counted. Showing opposed is Counselor Maderos, Counselor Dillon, Counselor Sprowieri. Mr. Chair, that motion carries six to three.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn the balance of the recommendations back to you.
Okay, thank you. We do have, we do have motions here for the minutes of the Planning and Development Committee meeting for 10.1 and 10.2, moved by Counselor Moore, seconded by Counselor Gibson. All in favor? That carries. And 10.6, which we brought forward as well, moved by Counselor Moore, seconded by Counselor Maderos. All in favor? That carries. Thank you. Okay. We will move on to item 10.3, the minutes of the Audit Committee. Counselor Palashi, you chaired the Audit Committee, which met on June 6. I now pass the chair to you to lead council in consideration of the committee minutes.
June 6, well, thank you very much, seat holder. The Audit Committee, the Audit Committee enhances council's oversight and stewardship responsibility. It provides a focal point for improved communication between council and internal and statutory auditors and management, further strengthens the impartial, objective, and independent review of management practices through the internal statutory audit functions. During the Audit Committee, members of council, you have before you the minutes of the June 6 Audit Committee. Are there any questions regarding the minutes as presented?
Seeing none, Mr. Acting Mayor, I pass it back to you for ratification. Okay. 10.3, the minutes of the Audit Committee, June 6, I have a motion from Counselor Palashi, seconded by Counselor Moore. All in favor? That carries. Counselor Palashi, I will stick with you. You have also 10.4.
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. This special Audit Committee meeting was called to receive the 2016 audited consolidated financial statements for the City of Brampton. There was a report from Mr. Kevin Travers of KPMG. Staff provided information on the terms of agreement with the William Olser Health System of the remaining 20 million, the city's 60 million commitment to the facility. Also, we, we did hear from our chief administrative officer advised that the 9 million in termination costs outlined in the Audit Findings Report is accurate, and Mr. Schlang provided information, additional information on the efficiencies that will be achieved on future operating budgets as a result of the restructuring. Mr. Acting Mayor, and members of council, you have before you the minutes. Are there any questions? Seeing none, I pass it back to you for ratification.
Thank you very much, Counselor Palashi. We have a motion from Counselor Palashi, seconded by Counselor Dillon, for the minutes of the Special Audit Committee of June 13. All in favor? That carries. Thank you very much. Moving on to item 10.5, the Committee of Council met on June 14. The committee minutes are here for council's approval. I'll now pass the chair to the respective section chairs in the order of consideration during the committee meeting to lead council in the consideration of each of the committee minutes. Counselor Dillon, you chaired the Corporate Services Section.
Would you, would you want me to go ahead?
Okay. I chaired the Economic Development Section, so I will give a brief overview there. We had a presentation from Jen Vivian, the Brampton Entrepreneur Center update. She told us some great news about all the new people we have in the program this year, what we've done over the past several years, and how the Entrepreneur Center has grown. We then had a report from Kelly Stahl on the 2017 Women's and U14 Girls Canadian Softball Championships, looking for an in-kind hosting grant, and a second report from Kelly Stahl on the Arts Walk of Fame, and then we did go into closed session on the Arts Walk of Fame as well. Any questions from the Economic Development? Okay, thank you very much. Counselor Willens, you chaired Public Works and Engineering.
Thank you, through Acting Mayor. We had the Public Works and Engineering Section on June 14. We, the main topic on the agenda was shade shelters, and that was, was quite a active conversation on the amount of shade shelters that were in each ward, but there was a, I believe a motion was put, was put on the table, I think Counselor Maderos put it on, to refer it to Budget Committee and staff, seemed to be okay with that. There was a special event road closure announced for Classic Cars 2017 for July 20th to 22nd. The area councillors had no concerns over that, and there was an exciting new school infrastructure improvements, community safety in the most sensitive neighborhoods. I'll pass it back to you, Acting Mayor, for ratification.
Okay, thank you very much. Counselor Palashi, you chaired the Community Services Section?
I pass the chair to you to, oh, I'll go, I'll just take it from here. The possible items to note during the Community Services Committee was a delegation from Kimberly Floyd, VP Home and Community Care, and Avon Sinha, Director, Subregion Planning and Integration, Central West Local Health Integration Network, exercised the Falls Provincial Prevention Program, and successful collaboration with the City of Brampton. Another item was proposed partnership with the Peel District School Board, the shared use of, use of artificial turf sports field. Another item was a Habitat Humanities Expression of Interest for surplus of city properties, and staff will be reporting back on that item. Members of council, you have before you the minutes of the Community Services. I pass it back to you, Mr. Chair, Acting Mayor.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Seeing none. Thank you very much, Counselor Palashi. Counselor Dillon, you chaired the Corporate Services Section?
I did. So, Corporate Services Section, there was a presentation by Rhonda Singles in regards to the continuous improvement approach by reviewing City of Brampton's services. There was also a presentation by Ms. Singles regarding building and sustaining the City of Brampton's high-performance culture. That was- of Brampton's high-performance culture that was received by council. There were other reports that were in consent. There was a long-term financial master plan by the Treasurer, Mr. Sutton, which discussed the need, sorry, there was a committee discussion, including the need for all members of council to be present during consideration of long-term financial master plans as it relates to the use of legacy funds for major projects. Going on, there was a report from Mr. Ruben Vaughn in regards to AMO, their annual conference. And as well, there was the minutes from the Taxi Cab Advisory Committee. And at the request of Mr. Patrari Commissioner, there was an overview of the last Taxi Cab Committee on May 30, 2017, which highlighted some of the discussion points, including representatives from Teamsters, meeting in conjunction, meeting with some of the members, as well as some of the terms that were accepted by the Taxi Cab Advisory Committee members. Going on, there was a number of other items, and there was no other correspondence or no other questions during council question period. Pass it back to you.
Thank you very much. Seeing no questions, we have a motion by Councilor Willens, seconded by Councilor Maderos, to receive the minutes of the Committee of Council meeting June 4, 2017. All in favor? That carries. And we've already, we've already considered 10.6. I seem to be missing one page here, Mr. Clerk. So, next item on the agenda is 11.1, media inquiries and the proposed motion, and we will be moving into closed session for that. If you could do that for me, I don't have the page here, so. Yeah. For advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose, media inquiry matters. Yeah, okay. And while we're in closed session, I suggest we also consider closed session 21.8, related to our next item, right after, right after this. Notice a motion regarding outside policy requests so that we can continue with that item in public session as well. And it's 21.8, personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees. So we will move into closed session on the sixth floor for those two items only. And we will, it's 1:30. We'll do that at 1:45. Okay? Yeah, the page, that page is gone?
1:45.
1:45.